Like to call to order the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, October 8th, 2025. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for
Good morning, Commissioners. I want to, before we start today, just acknowledge that Commissioner Hartwick and Controller Bateman are out today. So we will not have a quorum for Salary Board and we'll need to wait until next week to work through that portion of the agenda.
Sounds good. Thank you. We'll begin with public participation on agenda items only. So this is for anything that is before us on the agenda today. It is a three-minute time cap and you'll need to state your name prior to your comments. Anyone for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to the approval of minutes. We have workshop and legislative minutes, but we will not take action on the Salary Board minutes due to not having a quorum.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 17th, 2025 workshop meeting and the September 24th, 2025 legislative meeting.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Haggerty.
On Tuesday, October 7th, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase or release of real property, active or pending litigation, and personnel matters.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none. We'll move on to Directors and guests. Want to welcome Chad Libby from, he's the Director of our Juvenile Probation and his team. I'm going to hand it over to Commissioner Priest, who's going to lead this portion. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Very excited to have Chad and his team here today as we do a proclamation for Juvenile Justice Week here in Dauphin County. I want to thank you for incredible work that you and staff of dedicated professionals do on behalf of the residents 24/7, 365 days a year. You're called out at different times during the day, during the night, walking into situations that are many times very hazardous. And a lot of times you're working with the future of this great nation, the children, and giving them opportunities to advance themselves in a positive manner. Many times you're walking into situations where, almost every time you're walking into situations where they don't want to be near you, with you, or getting any advice from you. But you're providing that positive demeanor, you're walking them down the road to maturity, down the road to being successful individuals in society and getting back into the community and being upward citizens. So thank you for the great work that you do every day on behalf of all three Commissioners and 293,000 residents.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for their ongoing support. We couldn't be successful here as a probation department without the, you know, the leadership and the support that we received through my 28 years here. But, you know, just the court support as well to ensure that we have the resources necessary to ensure that, as you stated, that we uplift these youth, make them, you know, try to steer them in the right direction. And, you know, it really starts with Professional Alliance, and Professional Alliance is a real key skill set, you know, for our officers to build that trust, to build that relationship with the youth that we deal with. And, you know, we have challenges. We have those modern, high-risk youth that really underscores the importance of collaboration with the school districts, with our human service departments, our police aid departments, the courts, you know, you name it. The key, you know, collaboration is so important to ensure that we are able to implement with fidelity all the skill sets that we've developed over the years. And, you know, we, we've come a long way. You know, I remember 28 years ago when I started, we were, you know, use the analogy, coaches versus referees. We were referees back in the day. We were just out there, you know, making sure kids were coming in for curfew, you know, paying their fines, going to school, but we really weren't coaching, you know? Now we have a system that we've embarked on since 2010 in Pennsylvania, Juvenile Justice System Enhancement Strategy. It really provides more of an objective approach on how we handle youth, using empirical research and data to show what's worked, what works in reducing recidivism. We now assess youth, what's causing their criminal behavior and their delinquent acts, and, you know, and really constructing a case plan around that. But it really takes the dedication of professional of our staff here to really carry out those functions day in and day out, and it's not easy. We know that. But that professionalism is so critical to success, and I want to really thank our team for just the resiliency that they, they displayed day in and day out, and their commitment. You know, unfortunately, we have youth with, you know, a lot of firearm charges. We're up by, I think, over 60 already this year. And these are the type of youth that we want to try to steer in the right direction. I want to thank our community partners, our community-based providers as well, because without them, we try to keep our youth in the community where their life connections are. We know that's more successful. And it's a challenge for our providers, but they work day in and day out to really ensure that they are providing the services necessary for kids and families to succeed. I want a special thank you to Deputies Nicole Mattern and Chris Hackel. You know, when we were a merged department, you know, I concentrated a lot on the adult side because there was a lot of new initiatives going on. And we were trying to replicate what we did in the juvenile system in terms of using empirical research and evidence-based practices. Their leadership has been, you know, just exemplary. I can't thank them enough for their, their commitment, the hours at night receiving those phone calls, looking for a bed for a youth who's picked up for a firearm charge. They don't sleep much, and I really just appreciate them because without these two leaders, you know, we wouldn't be able to achieve the success we have. And I'd like just to acknowledge, you know, in Juvenile Justice Week, and it's a great opportunity, especially this year, because our upcoming James E. Anderson Conference on Juvenile Justice is our statewide conference. We were, you know, honored to have two recipients receive awards this year. Our Supervisor of the Year, Nicole Mattern, she'll be recognized in November 2nd or 3rd, somewhere, the first week where we have our conference right over at the Hilton. And then we also, we see the award for Probation Officer of the Year, and that's Aleah Duarte. Aleah? So it's a great honor. There are categories that, you know, throughout all of Pennsylvania, they were selected to receive these awards. It just shows you the commitment that we have. And I want to, again, thank our team, thank you all, our supervisors that do a great job, and just being coaches, and that's, that's the critical piece. Teaching kids skills, helping them grow, not just, you know, refereeing and just looking at violations. So with that said, thank you to Board of Commissioners for taking this time to acknowledge you in our Justice Week, and I want to again thank our team. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I think, what a great analogy from going from being a referee to being a coach. I think, I think, you know, coaches have the ability to earn trust, build a relationship, and then be able to speak direction into somebody. And I think that's a very necessary thing for a lot of our juveniles today, whether they're in the justice system or not. I mean, I think everybody needs a coach, and I think everybody needs that kind of mentorship that's kind of guiding and directing. I think we're all looking for, especially as young people, you know, people who can help us, you know, and guide us. And so thanks for the work you're doing in that. And I know you're doing that work with a lot of resource challenges. I mean, certainly give it up to the courts for finding resources for you, but everyone's resource depleting right now and struggling to find the ability to pay staff, the ability to have the resources necessary to get the job done. So I just want to thank you and your staff for being able to do what you do, even with the challenges of gathering resources and gathering staff and filling those spots that exist to get the job done. Chad, I want to just specifically shout out to you on your professionalism and competency. I've had the privilege of sitting with Chad many times in CCAP, as I sit on the Courts and Corrections Committee, and have had him come in and talk. And I'm like, wow, we are blessed to have Chad here in Dauphin County because he's such a wealth of knowledge, and he's often sharing that knowledge throughout Pennsylvania, through things like CCAP and other things. And so thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your commitment and service to the county. It really does mean a lot. Thank you to everyone on the team who's been also doing that work. So I'm excited for Commissioner Priest to read this proclamation.
And Chad, how long have you been in the position as Director?
I'm 14 years.
Okay. I remember, I've been in this position a little over 14 years, and I remember one of the first calls I got from your department was when you called me, giving me an update on a new program that was coming out of Harvard that you were taking a chance on. And the one thing I will always say about your department, they're always proactive as opposed to being reactive, and that's, again, do the professionalism of you and your great team that you have here. And congratulations on those awards. 67 counties, we have two of the awards right here from Dauphin County. Again, the professionalism and the dedication of your staff is second to none. At this time, I'm going to read a proclamation into the record. We, the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners, proudly honor and celebrate the juvenile probation officers who play a crucial role in supporting at-risk youth by dedicating their time and expertise to guide them through challenging circumstances. Whereas Dauphin County's juvenile division is charged with ensuring balanced and restorative justice through the implementation of evidence-based practices through the juvenile justice system enhancement strategies. Whereas juvenile probation officers in Dauphin County provide balanced attention, the protection of our community, promoting victim restoration, imposition of accountability for offenses committed by juveniles, and the development of competencies to enable juveniles to become responsible and productive members within their communities. Whereas these dedicated juvenile probation officers work tirelessly to implement the best practices and provide treatment and services in a fair and unbiased manner with the goal of youth redemption. Whereas their commitment goes beyond mere supervision, they invest in building relationships that empower youth to make better choices and envision brighter futures, often becoming a steady source of encouragement during pivotal moments in their lives. Therefore, we join the 293,000 residents of Dauphin County in lifting and supporting these juvenile probation officers and honoring all the time and effort they continue to give for the youth they work with. And we do hereby proudly proclaim October 5th through October 11th as Juvenile Justice Week 2025 in Dauphin County.
Can I just stop this stand, please?
Can we get them up here for?
Yep. Thank you all.
Alicia found a star running back, right? You don't see many Cleveland Browns fans here. Danny, you're not there.
As stated earlier by the Chief Clerk, we are without a quorum and therefore will be skipping item eight, but we'll still have Cassie Reschinsky come up for item nine.
I'm going to ask her. I do have a question, Cassie. On item eight, again, that's something that's been approved by Salary Board and the Director.
Oh, for Salary Board?
Yes.
Yes.
And it is a cost saving, so clearly it's something we should fully.
Next week, we will take that action on the Personnel Packet.
The Personnel Packet is ready for your approval. Just item 55 was a revision.
Item 55 is a revision? I'll make a motion to approve Personnel Packet for this week's meeting.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yes, just confirming everything within the Personnel Packet is within the 2025 approved budget.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Davis, Director of Budget Finance.
I have no changes to the investment report that was sent out earlier in the week. There's also no changes to the purchase order packet. It's ready for your approval.
Any questions of Mr. Davis? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion for the Purchase Order Packet.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest. I'll second. Any discussion?
Yeah, as I look here, just to confirm, I noticed two weeks ago, some of the budget remaining was in the positive. Looks like everyone listed here, the majority of them is minus, which means that's how much is left, correct?
No, that's part of the issue with the Oracle integration. The budget is not pushed over, so what you're seeing is the actual spend in that category because there's no budget in this module to subtract it from.
I'm glad you said that. Can we come up with a process so that when we're voting on this information publicly, we have the correct budget remain here? Because we're technically voting on something that is an incorrect allocation number.
Just to be clear, you're saying Budget Remaining Column is actually what's annual year spend?
Yes. So that column, the formula behind the scenes would take the budget minus any spending, minus whatever's requested. There's no budget figure in the front of that equation to have this subtract from, so that's part of the integration that we're working to fix.
Are you able to flag which ones are over budget for us so that we can, like, in the future, even, would that be maybe something that we?
The reason I'm asking that is I'm looking here and I see several DCPs are under a quarter million dollars, but then some Dauphin County prison ones, and even 350,000, others are over 40,000, 1,100. I'm just trying to decipher what that actually means. As I ask each time, the Personnel Department, is this under the budget for 2025? When I look at these numbers, that's telling me that maybe some are, maybe some.
I can work with staff to see what kind of solution we can come up with in the meantime while we work with Oracle.
The, the long-term fix for this will be part of the scope of work with Creole Consulting, who you all approved a week ago to begin working on addressing our Oracle implementation challenges.
I believe we have a motion and a second, some discussion. Are we ready for action? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Happy belated birth.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. Chief Clerk's report. Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are several items on the agenda today for your consideration. We have two satisfaction pieces, two partial refunds, one domestic relations agreement, one public safety agreement, one human services agreement, one area agency on aging agreement, eight adoption agreements, four children and youth agreements, two MOUs with schools, and one mental health autism developmental programs agreement. That concludes my report. Unless there are any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none. Solicitor's report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none. We'll move on to matters requiring board action. We have 24 items before us. I'll entertain a motion for one through 24.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of items one through 24 on today's packet.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Former business? I'm seeing none. New business? Commissioners, discussion and actions. Commissioner Priest.
Yes, Commissioner Douglas, it was great joining you yesterday in support of our annual Dauphin County Golf Outing. Yesterday, we exceeded in 29 years of doing it, and it's still at Dolphin Highlands Golf Course, and they do a wonderful job hosting us. I want to thank them. We exceeded the $1 million mark yesterday at the golf outing. This goes back several boards, back to, I believe, Sally Klein, Russ Schaefer, Tony Petrucci, John Payne, Lomen Henry, Tony Petrucci, Jeff Hayes, Nick DiFrancesco, George Hartwick, Commissioner Hartwick, Commissioner Douglas, and I today. So this has been going on for a long time. Dolphin County Prison used to run the golf outing, and now Parks and Rec's been running it for several years, doing a remarkable job. Michelle McKeon, Anthea Stebbins and their team out there, and all the volunteers that helped. It was a remarkable success. Michelle McKean, Anthea Stebbins and their team out there, and all the volunteers that helped. It was a remarkable success. Thank you to the sponsors and thank you to all the golfers. It was, I mean, we, we had double golfers pretty much on all 18 holes, which is remarkable as well. Beautiful weather yesterday, but again, the highlight of the day was exceeding $1 million to date to Dauphin County charities.
Yeah, that was a great time. I'm thankful for all of our, those who participated. It was a beautiful day for golf, too. I had the opportunity to participate on Friday in the Dauphin County Hispanic Heritage Celebration. I just want to thank everyone on our staff who volunteered and the team who put that together. And it was cool to see so many local schools represented there too, kind of celebrating. So, so that was a really great opportunity to participate in that. I also want to thank Hector Ortiz for putting on Estamos Unidos Gala, which was celebrating Latino heritage on Saturday. That was a great event to go to and see some really cool, like, dances and, and some different food that was, was really great. I also want to thank the prison administration. One of the things we've been wanting to do is really honor our correction officer graduates and their families with, with a luncheon after they finish their training. And we now have, have done that for a few classes and just, just this last, just a couple of days ago, we were out at Fort Hunter celebrating the most recent graduating class of correction officers. And it's been, you know, a challenge to see the staffing out at Dauphin County Prison. I believe when I was sworn in, we were at about 70 correction officers down. Now with the upcoming class that's about to graduate here in a few weeks, we'll be, I think, somewhere around 20 correction officers down. So we've really turned a corner, but there's still a lot of improvement needed in that. So I'm excited to see them kind of, you know, honoring the graduates, including their families, getting an opportunity to talk about, you know, a new culture that we're trying to really set out there and, and thankful for the leadership of the admin in that. And thankful to Fort Hunter for making the space available for us because it is a beautiful space to have.
Did you have something else, Dad?
Yes, I didn't mention, actually, all three Commissioners last week attended the naturalization ceremony over in Courtroom 1. It was put on by Pathonatary Matt Krupp and Judge Courtney Powell did an amazing job running the ceremony. And it was just great seeing the excitement on our newest, our newest United States citizens' faces as they took that oath. And just great having them here and being able to be part of that right next door. Again, a great job by the courts, as usual.
Definitely, definitely. That's always, it's always a very just joyous thing to go to. If you've never been to one, it's public. You can show up to those. And I think it's really cool to see the journey that any of these people have been on to become American citizens, so. For correspondence, I see none, but the Chief Clerk's office will receive correspondence and disseminate as needed. Hearing, we have zero people pre-signed up for public participation on, on our sheet. But if anyone would like to make public, take, take part in public participation, we have a three-minute cap. We are being livestreamed and you'll need to state your name prior to speaking. Anyone for public participation? Come on.
Hi, my name is Charlie Buckwalter. I was just wondering, Commissioner Douglas, if you are able to say, has there been any news about the Prime Care to Medico medical records transfer? I know there was an issue last week that was spoken about where medical records had to be manually entered instead of having like an automatic data transfer. Is there any news on that?
To my knowledge, we still have not received the medical data, but it's in process. And it's something that I'm behind the scenes working very hard to ensure that we get access to the data that is ours. And so our, I've been in talks with our Solicitor's Office to ensure we're doing everything legally possible to, to acquire the records that we need in order to provide adequate and patient care. And so we are, we are in the works for that. We are working hard to make sure we get that. And Medico has everything they need to be successful.
Understood.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by myself. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.